Alright, I'm gonna call the ordinance subcommittee meeting of December 10th, 5:15. All of us are in attendance. I don't think... Oh, we did.
That's an example.
Okay, well, we're using speakers. So, we did get some minutes.
Just a few.
And I'm fine. I did have a chance to look at them quick. I don't know if Peg did.
I did.
Okay.
You can call it, try and call JP's right there.
No, I...
A JP's idea?
No.
So, and I'm fine to, if you wanna move them.
I have read them.
Okay.
I have scrutinized them.
Show you that out.
I have not enjoyed the little comment you put in there about when we said, when the cars come down, when they come barreling down the hill and you put, "Councillor Combs said," whatever the quick one.
No, it was not, it was not recorded, but I did indicate that I would include that in the minutes. So, I'm happy to take that out of it if you'd like me to, if you'd like me to remove that.
No, because that's what I said. It reflects exactly what we said. So, do you wanna go through the dates and we'll just mark them?
Yeah, let's, let's make sure we have the dates.
I thought you would enjoy that.
I totally enjoyed it.
Okay.
Let's go through the dates and then we'll move on.
It was October, it was September.
Do you have the, do you have a list of the dates?
Just some, yeah.
Or do you wanna...
No, I can tell you.
I get it out of these papers.
The dates that we've met in December, June, May?
No.
No, no, no.
No.
They're not tough, shit.
Oh, okay.
They would be, they would be 9, 10.
Correct.
9:26.
Yes.
10:08.
Yes.
10:29 and 11:12.
Correct. All I, a motion to approve.
Okay. Second? Second?
Oh, you want me to second it? No, you were seconded. I guess I'll second it.
Oh, yeah, are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And I don't think anybody's here for public speak time, because I imagine you guys are here to speak to something that's on our agenda, the engine brakes. So, okay.
I hope we picked that one first.
Oh, well, I was thinking of putting it towards the end.
Yeah.
No, we'll definitely, we'll, let's talk.
You're, you're at least in the top nine.
Yeah. One, two, no, we only have four things, so I mean, top four.
You're good, you're up.
Alright, so, let's, let's go directly to engine brake proposal from JP.
Well, we had, had several meetings with the folks on Florence Road. And Councillor Gomez was there, Councillor Jarrett was there. And there were several folks from there who mentioned that they were very upset about two things. One was speeding on the road, and the other was the noise from engine brakes. What are engine brakes? That's sometimes called jake brakes, where trucks use their engine to help slow them down, rather than...
Do they downshift or something?
It's a down, kind of a downshift.
It's the transmission that goes into different modes.
Oh, cool.
And, and I brought a little, just examples of what it's like for residential neighborhoods. So, if you bear with me here.
And they have machines.
So, that's, that's kind of what you hear sporadically anytime a truck uses its engine.
Do you hear this?
Well, the ones who were talking about is, I don't hear as much, come a little farther up the hill, but I just hear the general, I can tell, I know it, which...
So, is this like, is this like from Burt's Pit? And now, ramping up, because Florence is coming from our side down.
Coming from our side down. They're like...
You know where the Lathir poem is?
Yeah, yeah, right there.
Just below that, just where it starts, first to the hill.
Or toward us.
Towards East Hampton.
Because they're right on the hill.
Got it.
Back across the hill and going down and...
They're usually going at a good clip, so when they hit the top of that hill, they just let the engine go.
Okay.
And, and it saves their brakes, you know, but crosses a racket for everybody.
Our house actually shakes. If a big truck, if a bigger truck goes down through, it actually shakes.
Is this a new phenomenon?
Yes.
Why is that, do you think?
I don't know.
New as in like the last year, the last two months?
Well, for some, for some reason, rather, that road became the main road.
It's like a highway. I call it a highway. Did they close the roads on it? No.
No, just more and more development in Northampton. And then, and then deliveries to that area, and of course, and trucks that go through.
Okay.
And now, it's not just trucks, it's pickup trucks, I understand.
You know, pickup trucks, of all dump trucks.
Small dump trucks.
I would know where to go on it.
Lastways running there, actually fully loaded lumber trucks through there.
I, I'm just gonna back up for a second. Can you two introduce yourselves?
Sure. I'm Maureen from Squali Hall.
And I'm Cat, your husband.
Okay. We're at 51 Florence. Okay. Just wanted to get that on the record.
So, other communities have enacted ordinances to prevent this type of activity, especially if there's abuse, if it seems to be the same company, the same fleet of trucks, the same offenders, and then the police have the power to do something about it. So, Northampton had an ordinance, and that's basically what introduced here, is, is Northampton. There are some simpler ordinances that don't have as much language. In Hoyok, for example, which just says, "Use of engine brakes shall be prohibited throughout the city." That's, that's it.
Just you do it.
And it costs for any violation $300, and it goes into a few other things about how you can complain in district court to fight the refuse. That basically is something that enables us to post a sign that says, "Engine brakes prohibited." And then, of course, in an emergency, if the brakes failed on a truck, of course, they could use their engine brake, regardless of the sign or any ordinance, if you want them to do so.
So, we don't have anything currently on the books around braking?
That's correct. So...
And that one there is Northampton?
It's Northampton, yes.
I noticed lately, too, that when I'm on guard duty at Pepin School for the kids, they're using their jake brakes there, and there's no reason they're using them, because there's no hills or anything.
No.
And they're not going slow, neither. I've come close to it quite a few times.
Right.
They don't seem to realize what 25 miles an hour is like.
Right.
Okay. Have you at all spoken to the police chief?
I have, and I was hoping that Sergeant Ross might be able to join us this evening. If not, I've asked him to review this from the police perspective, so we can have some input. It may be simpler language, as Hoyok's example may be something that's easier for them to actually be able to enforce, because there are some clarifiers here that kind of make it a little bit gray.
The, the one that recognizes that there is an important safety component?
Yeah. Rather than just assume it's the will of God, that public safety is important, if your brakes fail, you're going to use whatever means you can to slow them down.
Oh, that's understandable.
And, and that is understandable. And that may be a better way of approach. So, I, I would think we're gathering some input from the police. And then, I was hoping that we could have, perhaps, another meeting and a vote on the subject after we've gotten the police.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, we talked about the language. Is this the language, the same language that you introduced?
This is the language I introduced, and I just read the Hoyok.
I can't find it. Have you?
Well, we had looked, we reviewed this last time. I remember it's, some of it seemed a little ambiguous, and I just wanna make sure we tighten it up.
Maybe it was mainly just to get out there and get us something on the table to start the discussion.
Yeah, of course. Oh, I understand that. I just...
And Hoyok's is really very simple and clean. "Use of engine brakes shall be prohibited throughout the city."
Do you think there's any need as we craft, you know, as this is crafted to, like, One Ferry Street is an example of an active construction zone? Would there be any reason, so, let's say we did something across the city. Would there be any reason to say anything around active construction zones where it might be needed there, or are they just never needed unless it's a safety issue?
They're never needed unless it's...
You're coming down a hill.
If you're coming down a hill and you really are gonna burn out your brakes, start burning your brakes, otherwise, you don't need to use them. Now, they are, from truckers would say that this is a great feature. This is something that enables you to save your brakes, reduce costs in company. But in a residential neighborhood...
Yeah.
Well, it's interesting that you ask that, Councillor Combs, because Northampton does have an exception. So, it says subsection A of this section shall not apply to heavy commercial vehicles going to or coming from places upon such streets for the purpose of making deliveries of goods, materials, or merchandise to or similar collections from abutting land or buildings, or adjoining streets, or ways to which access cannot otherwise be gained, or to vehicles used in connection with construction, maintenance, or...
Oh, that's the actual wording?
Yeah.
That's additional.
Yeah, it's additional. So, it basically says, if they're going to a construction, a maintenance site, or they're repairing the streets, then it's exempt from that.
Okay.
But, and there's, they also, they also actually prohibit commercial vehicles from certain street, streets, like Bridge Street to North Street. And I, I have a feeling that might be because of the trucking bridge. I don't know.
I think Lyman has a truck exemption.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, when we have in East Hampton, we have Lyman, which doesn't have, no commercial vehicles are allowed. Almost seems like Cotton Street would benefit from that.
It should be number one.
And then, they also have, you know, it's interesting, they have a signage component to it. It says, "The Department of Public Works shall establish clearing conspicuous signage upon prohibited streets."
I have seen their signs randomly.
Generally, when you enter the city.
Yeah.
And that's, that's like the typical posting of no engine brakes. Councillor, there.
Would we be able to get in touch with these other municipalities and find out kind of how they're enforcing this, what their rate of enforcement is? I'm just kinda curious, because I, I'm 100% for this. It's a nuisance. It's inappropriate use of, of this technology or whatever, but I also wanna make sure that we don't just have something on the books that can't be, oh, give you a little do anything about.
That's what Sergeant Ross was working, working in.
Enforcement piece?
With some of the other communities to see how they're handling.
I mean, I think part of it would be that the signage, as you entered the city, would be a deterrent, at least more than what we have now. But I imagine that enforcement would be challenging, unless they're already at it.
Unless something happens right in front of you.
Yeah.
It's obnoxious.
And they may have to do it.
We're not gonna be spending time going out looking for, for this.
But I agree with you that you think that maybe you'll just see the sign.
In the early days, you might not use it.
Just sit there and let people know.
Especially if the sign is like bright fluorescent.
If you're on radar duty and some truck's going by and it's just making a racket, you might pull over. Either a warning or you're fine.
I wonder how the residents over by 141, I wonder how they hear it?
Yeah, it's true.
Because coming down the mountain, you know that they're definitely using it.
Because you have the stop sign.
Oh, you mean, where?
Coming down the mountain. Coming down the mountain, yeah.
There's a stop sign there.
Yes. No, but you mean Hendrickson, that's not, so what are you talking about?
Yeah, I think the worst of lighting, maybe my spots mess up. Which I didn't want to do.
So, JP, is it possible for you to kind of, as you communicate with the police, to bring us into the fold on that? And I think that probably what we'll do is we'll take a look at the wording and try to just craft it a little bit to make it easy and simple, and, and see if we need, if we need to have any sort of exemption for construction, I think that's a valid question, we should probably get answered. Because, you know, they, if they're hauling, you know, 100,000 pounds of, of cement block down that little ferry street hill, they might have to, and are we gonna like have a police officer there waiting for them to ticket them? I, I don't know, but...
And then, the other, the other issue, we need to really address 141 at the mountain. I would expect that that would be inappropriate location.
Yeah.
Steep grade, precipitous, I mean, it's a big drop.
Right. I mean, like, that's a tiny run, like, how, I mean, Florence Road, that's certainly less than a quarter mile, that whole hill. It's maybe...
Yeah, it's pretty short.
Yeah, .15 miles, maybe. I mean, I can't imagine if people, especially people who are traveling at appropriate speeds, that they need to use their engine brakes there.
Yeah. That's probably just excessive. Okay. I think this is, this is good. We can, we can roll on with this from here.
Can you send us a copy of that?
Sure. I can, I'll go make a little...
Because then we don't have to do the research. I've got another question. Just take your notes. What about the digital speed times?
The battery.
I know, it's only a temporary. Are we gonna be able to get permanent, two of them?
Well, I think that's a...
So, that's, I mean, so that is in Public Safety Committee right now? And, and I know that it's been, I'm on that committee, so it's been brought up.
Okay.
So, the police off, the, the chief knows that, and I think that he's working on a grant to get permanent. So, I mean, it's in the works, and we know that that one's not working, so...
Well, they only last so long.
Yeah. They're, they're battery powered. I guess that one died, and then the data got corrupted or something.
Well, but then they put another one out, but in kind of in not as ideal a location, going towards Forest Duck and, towards Duck and Donut. I mean, it would have been more helpful either. I've read the top of the hill, no matter which direction you're going. Especially, I, personally, I think as you're going towards Lyman, because that's where people...
It was good where it was.
Agreed.
But then coming down, you have to have one coming down.
Yeah, and they would have to be, so, they would have to have, you know, the solar power, but people have to identify strategic places that they're supposed to have.
Yeah. Does it have to be on existing signage? Or at least, that would make it easier.
Just for FYI, I drove dump trucks in Connecticut and here, because this is where we're based out of, is East Hampton. That 40-foot trailer, messy 50, backhoe on the back, plus the Bobcat. Now, I never had any problem at the top of the mountain, because I knew what to do. The dump truck itself had an eight-speed transmission, got a high and a low part of the transmission. All I did was put everything down in the low part of the transmission and just use the brake lightly. I never had any problem.
That's what I understand.
Is there, and forgive me if I'm, I just don't know, is there a difference between just downshifting and using the engine that way versus the engine brakes? Because, I mean...
Well, the smaller dump trucks don't have the engine brake.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
That's just the, that's just the downshift of the motor and transmission stuff.
Right. And that's what I do when I come down. I just downshift it to like third gear, and I never have to brake.
Yeah. Even my little boat that I got, I used as a downshift. Was my pickup truck, for crying out loud, coming down the mountain.
Yep.
An 18-foot boat, which, which that weighs, 1,000 pounds, maybe? It's just, to me, it's just use of common sense.
Well, and I imagine it's convenience for...
Being stable in what you're doing.
Right. I imagine people that are using it are using it, A, for convenience, and B, for, to try to extend the life of their brake pads.
Yeah, but how much are they burning of their brake pads?
I mean, I would always...
I never burnt out any brakes at all. I mean, hit, the vehicles that I was driving, they got serviced every single year. Very rarely did we have to put brakes on them.
So, we, see if we can get people to stop doing it.
I think the signs could be a good deterrent.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, enforce them, it's gonna be hard. I mean, we're having a hard enough time, and this isn't a criticism or a police force, because they do an amazing job, but, you know, the reason that they're not out of Florence Road, for instance, enforcing the speed all the time, except at the million other places, so...
They're on calls.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, because they'd be sitting there, yeah, but it could be right, they'd earn some money, too.
No.
True.
Yeah, okay.
And they'd be raking in money right there to, of course, guard crossing at Pepin School.
Oh, well, yeah, all the school crossings.
Those guys are nuts. I forget, got nailed today.
Yeah, it's, the one on, up here on Clark Street corner is really bad, too.
Oh, I would not.
No, that's bull.
She wouldn't pay me to stay in there.
Yeah, that's rough.
No way.
That's rough, so...
I was there once when I first started the guard duty, and I said, "Never get what I go there."
She's crazy.
Yeah, and, yeah, and that has the stories every day, so...
Well, we talk about it. Is there anything else that we could be doing to help protect the safety of everyone there and the crossing guard, and anyone who crosses?
Put her in one of those. They have it for...
Actually, you know what I was thinking of? Just by, right down by the library.
Oh, what?
There's a flashing light, 25 miles, or 20 miles an hour. I was thinking of making up a sign, and it said, "Can't you read this?"
I was reading it.
That's a fox, he's awful. I'll get back.
Even the cars, they don't care. They don't, they're, they're doing 40, 50 miles an hour.
No, no, they do. They give them the finger.
Oh, geez. I've had more women give me the finger. And I, all I have to do, I just stand there and laugh. It is, it's hilarious.
Oh, gosh. Well, I thank you for coming in on this show.
Well, I'm sorry where they all went. They want to bitch and complain, excuse my English, but yet, they can't come.
That's pretty tight.
I wasn't here the last meeting. I was on a cruise.
And I forgot all about it.
But, yeah, we didn't have any...
No, we didn't, we really weren't gonna discuss it too much.
Mike, Mike shared up, right? Or was that for Public Safety?
That was Public Safety.
It was just the three.
Just the three, I was...
Yeah.
And I missed the dog park thing, and I missed that, because I wasn't here.
That's all ongoing and stuff that we can discuss elsewhere, but we, we know, I mean, it does help to get people to show up about these things, but, you know, we're aware, we're...
But don't complain, you know? You don't wanna show, well, complain yourself about what's going on, then don't, don't have meetings. I mean, okay, once in a while, you've gotta, I know Rick had something going on with his grandchildren, and he didn't make the last one either, so, but I was away, so I had an excuse. He had no excuse.
I mean, I'm trying to plead for God.
Well, so, you know, what we're gonna do is we'll probably have another committee meeting on this to just tighten up the language, and then we'll send a recommendation to the full council. Since it's an ordinance change, it's gonna have a public hearing, so I have to have a full public hearing in front of the city council.
And that would be upstairs?
That would be upstairs.
I'll let you know when that's happening.
Yeah.
I mean, Councillor Derby, you could probably speak to this, that this is probably the type of thing we'll probably get discussed a few more times, tightened up, and...
Yeah, I mean, once we get the language tightened up, I don't, I don't see any roadblocks, they're gonna keep this in committee, or, or, and I honestly, at the full council, I don't, I don't foresee any issues. This is pretty standard.
It's also, it's December now, so probably...
So, probably the January, February.
Yeah, right, so I was gonna say, yeah.
Probably, probably, first meeting in February.
Is there anything in the budget about hiring more policemen here in East Hampton?
That would be nice.
Every department.
Well, I was kinda, I was kinda wondering.
Then I could just hire more firemen.
Well, we just thought it was great.
I know, but can't we...
Yeah.
There's a lot of things in the works, you know, so...
I mean, when you exit the speed, no, okay.
There's the mayor, right there.
Yeah. The budget is, is stretched and...
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, so...
And that's all part of collecting for it.
So, anyway, I'm, I'm sure we'll see, see you all again when this comes to...
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming, and I'll let you, I mean, I'll let you know, I'll let you know when the next meeting is, and especially once, once this gets to full, though, but it probably won't be for a little while. Don't worry about that. I will, I'll let you, I'll text you.
Yep.
Yeah, and have a easy recovery.
Thank you. I am amazed with myself. I mean, he had a rotator cock in it, was...
It still gets too much to go first.
This is a whole shoulder replacement, and I think I've been able to take a shower.
Wow, when did you get done?
A week ago today.
Seriously? A shoulder replacement?
Shoulder replacement, and I'm already cutting down on my meds.
Oh, that's fabulous.
Yeah, and I...
Who is your doctor? I know we're still...
Jenny Garber, New England Orthopedics. I wouldn't go anywhere else, and I know you work at Hoyok, but, yeah.
She's very good. So, and she's the person to go to for that, too, so...
Yeah, she's excellent. No, I wouldn't go anywhere else.
Instead of the ball and socket, now it's the socket and ball. They reversed the whole thing.
Oh, God.
Yeah, well, it's, well, good for you. Yeah, I only had one problem, which was Wednesday night when the gear blocks started wearing off.
Yeah, I've been there.
And there's problems, but I'm already cutting down on my meds.
That's great.
So, yeah, but I'm, yeah, no, I'm amazed with myself when I'm able to go.
Thanks for coming.
You have half a...
You guys have the same last name, or?
Yeah, Squali.
No, I just couldn't, I just didn't, I know hers.
Mine is Miss Squali Dash Hall, he's just Paul.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Happy holidays.
Take care. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
You, though.
So, I can, if you guys wanna copy this, I can make you a copy.
Yeah, please.
And I can't, my ordinance folder is somewhere in my car. I couldn't, it was too dark.
I get everything. You're so organized.
Oh, yeah, you have that wonderful thing of like all the little stuff.
I got nothing right now.
Oh, that's funny.
I didn't have a chance to email you guys. I didn't want, I wanted to, at some point, get back to the public container stuff.
I was gonna, I was gonna bring that up tonight.
Okay.
I wanted to talk about that.
And you had nothing in front of me.
I don't have it in front of me either.
Well, that's, it's right here.
But Owen's got it in front of you.
I made copies for you guys.
So, so here was, here's, here's what my request was gonna be on here.
Okay.
My request was gonna be that we separate them and that we tackle alcohol first.
Yeah, they are separated.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and so here's alcohol. And basically, all I did with that, to be honest, was updated the, because it had all the names of like the old parks. Changed the names of the parks. And I added it, we didn't, much like some of, one of the other discussions we're having through public safety. We didn't have a local motor vehicle container.
Right.
So I put that in.
Okay.
And then I cruised the parks and recs.
So is that piece?
Oh, wait, yeah.
E, is that updated?
Uh, let me find that, sorry.
So little E, everything else is big.
Yeah, I'm looking at the wrong thing, sorry, I was looking at. That is.
D is what?
D. That is, that is D.
Everything else is the same?
Everything else is the same. I added a little thing to the, so the parks and recs have all these regs. So basically, like, I had a little bit of reflection on this, so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, city ordinance trumps anything that a department does. And so I started, you know, we had this in Parks and Rec, we're like, you know, so basically, as it stands right now, you know, you can't have oak containers anywhere unless Parks and Rec or the city council takes a vote to suspend it.
Right.
But you can drink at the pavilions, you can have oak containers at the pavilions in Natah Park. And the presumption there is that the Parks and Rec Commission votes every year, basically, to do that. To be like, we're gonna suspend, that's the presumption. I talked to John Mason about this. The presumption is that they're basically suspending their open container, the open container regulations every year to allow people, basically, to drink at pavilions, that's all it's supposed to do. So I just put that in there, basically, in section C1, which talks about, which addresses, well, so section C, the three, A, B, and C basically have three, or just outline three different distinct spaces in the city. One's just like public ways, basically, one is like parking lots and stuff like that, the other one's parks. And so in the parks, section C, I just put like a section C1, I don't know how we would number it, but basically, the Parks and Rec can set designated areas for consumption at a yearly meeting and passed by majority vote of the commission, blah, blah, blah.
Yep, I see that.
And then also that they can set temporary areas, so like if someone, for instance, wanted to, you know, it already says it in here that if they wanted to allow someone, like, say, some big festival at soccer fields, they could vote to suspend as well. You know, in their regs, they're basically like you can't assume alcohol at all at, like.
Boardwalk.
Boardwalk, but theoretically, they could always vote.
They could vote to suspend that for cultural chaos.
And we could vote to suspend that.
Yeah.
You know, cultural chaos, there's a discussion.
Cultural chaos is like fenced in, the bars are kind of fenced in.
Right.
Right, right, and I probably put some, somewhere I thought I put language about. Sorry, I added some language. Oh, I added language about, because I was thinking about this, because there was a discussion about last year, well, should they organize a cultural chaos, talking about maybe having like open containers where people can walk around with beer? And so that kind of then led to, well, you'd obviously have to then sit down, like, be like, you may have it, you may have an open container from like this street to this street to this side street to this side street.
Right.
So I just put a little thing about that, like suspension of this ordinance. By either body shall include the designated area or areas for consumption, including optical geographical boundaries and the relevant dates or time period for the suspension.
Right.
So.
So that makes sense.
And then I just, I, we had this discussion, too, and this was kind of apropos more on cannabis stuff, but I added like distance from daycares and schools as like kind of a higher potential.
I saw that, and I don't like it.
That's okay.
And so that's one of the pieces I wanted to discuss.
Yeah, well, that's the thing about these discussions, that's just an idea.
Yeah, yeah, no, perfect, and I also think the $500 fine is, so what I would like to see is that maybe produced, because five, I feel like $500 might be a disincentive for people to actually be given the ticket, because that's a pretty significant sum. And I would love to, I think that we could dovetail part of the problem, that one of the actual problems we have in the city is nips being tossed. And so if we somehow mention in this piece that the act of throwing a nip out of a car constitutes a violation of the open container law, because that way, if a police officer happens to see that happen, I think that they might be able to give them a fine for a littering. I don't know if they'd be able to give them an open container.
Well, because you have to have alcohol in it, wouldn't you, or no?
I don't know, but I think that if we add that in here, we could potentially, you know, make that part of the open container violation is throwing a open container of alcohol out of a car.
Yeah, probably throwing it by the attorney.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and the chief.
And just so you know, too, that $500 is not exceeding, so, I mean, all of this is police discretion. They don't have to give anyone a fine.
Right.
Right, so.
Yeah, 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 no, I get that. I just, I think what we said the other day, 150 is the largest fine that we have in the city at this point.
Yeah, but I mean, like, previous to this, it was also less, so I just wanted, I wanted to increase it. And again, like, I just threw a, I, as you probably know, I like to throw a bunch of things out there.
And see what sticks.
It's harder to see what I, you know, I just like, just to throw an idea.
Sure.
What is the driving force between A, B, and C, if you will? A, B, and C being only $100, and D blooming up to 500. What is the differentiator that makes D so much worse?
To have an open container in a car?
Well, I'm just, is that what that, is that the differentiator between A, B, and C?
That was my thought, is I think that's potentially a less, potentially much worse offense, although, you know, then open container, you're probably also potentially facing DUI.
DUI, yeah.
But I was just thinking it's.
But we're saying transport in A, B, and C as well.
But transport, I think, meaning like the act of like carrying it.
It's like walking down the street or riding a bike.
As opposed to city, would just be possessing.
That, this was.
I read this as car, but.
Well, because possessing would be like if you're sitting, I think, or transporting would be like if you're walking with it. This was the pre-existing, that was the pre-existing.
Yeah, that's pre-existing language, but.
I mean, again, this just goes to more from my, I was like, well, having an open container in a car is potentially a much worse.
Yeah.
But it might not be, because you could just be sitting in your car drinking, which is probably no worse.
Right, like before a show.
Yeah, yeah, for instance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've heard of people doing that.
Yeah, as have I. I mean, technically, I guess, I mean, it depends how some of this stuff is defined, is to talk about passenger areas and stuff like that, so like.
Yeah.
Like, I could see, I could see someone driving with an open container, that obviously would be a worse. So, but, but let's, maybe let's work our way up to that, because I think the $100 fine, which stays local, is great. So here's what kind of rubs me the wrong way about the school thing, is it's not consistent in the fact that we literally have the Pasquama Club, which is like a bar, an alcohol consumption club that borders our school.
No, I agree.
And it seems like those, you know, those people are in there drinking, and literally next to that is a package store.
I agree with you. It's back to us kind of crying foul with all the.
Right, so, like, for me, I'm kind of like, listen, you have an open container, you have an open container, you pay the fine, like, that's it. Because then you have to pull out the wheel, like, or were you, was it door to door? You know, like, property line to property line. I feel like it just makes, without that piece, it just makes it a lot easier, probably for enforcement, and easier to understand if you're someone who gets hit with this fine, really, like, no.
Yeah, what if you're on school grounds?
Well, I mean, I think that's different in the way that, you know, for example, if you went, say you're going to Luthiers tonight, and you parked at Maple School, and you decided to drink the beer in your car before you went into Luthiers, so you didn't have to pay as much or whatever, like, I think that's the thing people do. And, you know, so, school's closed.
Right.
You know, is it, is it that much more egregious than sitting somewhere, like, you know, a couple hundred feet down the street, sitting in your car drinking?
I agree with you, and just, again, just throwing things out there, especially because this is around the time where people are upset about some of this stuff. I just thought, you know.
Absolutely.
You know.
I don't think, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea to think about. From my, from my perspective, I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily something that A is gonna be more vertebraing, or B is gonna do anything other than just burden the person who made this mistake with a larger fine.
So make everything $100, but just incorporate a local, a local.
The local.
Vehicle open container.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not married to any of this stuff, I just want to, you know.
I mean, and I don't, what do you got, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I, I think simple is better. I think it's easier to understand, it's easier to enforce. I wonder if the vehicle, if we're gonna keep it pretty uniform, I wonder if the vehicle language can be incorporated into A, B, and C instead of creating a D? Because to me, D, I'm gonna stand on my view of the word transport until you convince me that it doesn't mean that driving wouldn't be included in.
I don't think it, well, I mean, I would, only in so much that I talked to, this came from the chief, because he said we don't have any, we don't have a local vehicle open container law. And so my understanding of transport means like you're walking with it as opposed to sitting.
But, well, you could say transport including vehicles.
But, yeah, transport, both walking and within a motorized vehicle, or a bike, or any of those things.
Skateboard.
Skateboard.
I guess, so here would be my question, so. Right. I think, so, the only thing I would say is if you proudly, if you look at the state level, they have separate wording as well. That they have really specific wording for what's happening with a vehicle.
Do you use the word transport?
I would assume so, but I'd have to, I could look, you want me to look at the MGL and get back to you for that?
Oh, I can do it.
So this is interesting. I think that this might be state language.
Probably, that's what I'm thinking.
Because, you know, so for example, it says the passenger area shall include the area designated to sit the driver.
It is, because that's where I took it.
Oh, okay.
That's where I took it from, that is state language.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, because it says not limited to a glove compartment, provided whoever the passenger area should not include the motor vehicle's trunk or locked glove compartment, which is.
Right, oh, well, that's why, that's, I mean, much like we talked about with the pedestrian thing, I just took it from that. So it's better to, you know, not reinvent the wheel.
It says here, the law allows for passengers to possess open containers in some circles and gyms.
Really? That's a state?
Limos.
Limos.
And.
But that would be motor homes.
Yeah, motor homes, yeah, I think it says that, I think the language is there, too.
It says, this shall not be part of passengers' motor vehicle design, maintain, or use for the transportation of persons for compensation or the living quarters. That means you could drink in a taxi.
By the way, the state fine is $500.
Is it?
Yeah, I think that's where I got that from.
Okay.
I don't think I made, yeah, I mean, because this was a long time ago.
Sure.
This is many ordinances again.
Many ordinances again.
But that's where I looked at that from, was the state, the state fines, not less than 100, no more than 500. So that's where that came from.
Okay.
And they have a separate, they have, they have a whole, they have a separate possession of alcohol of just a motor vehicle. So I think that's the reasoning, so instead of reinventing the wheel, you know.
Yeah.
And I think, I'm assuming in the state's eyes, they probably do see some difference between someone just walking around, you know, on the street with a bottle, and like someone in a car.
It's interesting, the nuances are so interesting, when you think about that, well, someone walking down the street with a alcohol, opened alcoholic container, or someone sitting in a passenger seat, not driving, with an open alcoholic container.
Right.
And it's interesting to think about, and I guess it's to discourage the driver from using them.
Yeah, I mean, who knows, who knows, who honestly knows what it is, like, honestly, like, I mean, honestly, like, someone in a backseat.
Right, like, well, I mean, I wonder, like, reading this makes me think, you know, shall not be applied to passengers or motor vehicle design, maintain, and use for the transportation of persons for compensation.
Right.
That's a taxi.
Taxi cab, correct.
I didn't, I didn't know you could drink in a taxi.
Yeah, yeah.
That's never crossed my mind.
So I think, like, I mean, a lot, like, the purpose of this whole thing is to try to mirror state law, and state law has separate.
Separate.
Stuff for.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with having separate stuff, you know, I think.
If you want the penalty to be less, it's fine.
I mean, well, maybe we split the difference, if it's, you know, 100 to 500, maybe we say 300.
Sure.
You know, exactly, say up to 300, and then, then, I mean, because even if we gave us the state penalty of 500, we probably wouldn't see 300 of it.
But we don't see any of that.
We don't see any of it, so at this point, you know, that would make, that would make a lot more sense for us.
I'm down with that.
And people would feel like they were, they were getting a deal.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly. You should get the deal that I got.
I got a deal for you.
Now, it's interesting, too, that these other ones, I had to look at the non-vehicle ones, but these, so these, so the state, as I mentioned, was no less than 100, no more than 500, do you think we should take out, like, just make it all officers' discretion then?
We could, I mean, you know, no, like, just say no more than 300, or something like that. I'm fine with that.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not attached to that either way, but again, just to answer your question, I think the purpose of having a separate one for a vehicle is just to, that seems to be the way it is elsewhere.
I mean, I think the important, you know, the fines are less important to me, because I don't know how many times, how often we give this violation.
No, correct.
But I think, you know what, I think the piece of this that makes sense is, or that is gonna be beneficial to us, is tightening up that park language and allowing for the potential closure of roads for community events. Like, I feel like that can help change the kind of experience of people that come to East Hampton for those types of things.
And to be frank, that was really part of the emphasis for me, too, was it was, A, I started to think about the cannabis stuff, and I started to read the current language we had, and I, what are you reading here for?
Library.
Oh, I don't.
Books.
No, it might be, it might actually be here. We might have just run over our time, so.
They're pretty prompt, so, yeah.
So I started looking at the language, I said, so one thing that is important to highlight is the abilities.
In the basement.
You know, for the purpose of events.
Yeah.
And two, it also, you know, made me realize that we, there is, there was potentially some, there was potentially some conflict between, like, if you read the Parks and Rec language, it almost makes it sound like they kind of like operate.
Independently from the law.
Independently from the city ordinances, yes, so I wanted to try to at least somehow tie those together.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Because, well, tactically, if someone wanted to have a party in Natah and suspend the regulations, and they go to the Parks and Rec Board, they could say no, and they could come to the council, and we could say yes, and.
Yeah, then, yeah.
I mean, but not that, just saying.
No, but you're right, that would put the, interesting conundrum.
But it is, I mean, the city code of ordinance trumps, sorry, supersedes everything else.
It does.
So.
You know, and I think one of the things that I would love, and maybe we can think about this for next time, is there a way that we can tackle?
For the library?
Library?
Yes.
Basement?
Basement.
Hi. Roommate. We just wanted to say hi to you. The basement.
You know, I think that the nip thing is an issue.
I totally agree.
And I'm apprehensive to look at a ban necessarily, just because I'm, you know, I feel like there could, there should be some way to responsibly manage those, so.
We should talk and introduce language.
Yeah, and I don't know what that is yet, but, and I don't know if it's related to open container, but it definitely, what it is related to is people drinking. Like, I've literally been in my front yard on Westview Terrace and had people fly down the street and toss nips into my yard while I'm sitting there.
It's more of a littering issue.
Yeah, it's a littering issue.
Yeah, and I agree with you that that's a, it's a nuisance and something to talk about.
Very difficult to enforce, which is the problem.
Right.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway, maybe we can, maybe that can be on our docket.
Because if you didn't see it falling out of a car.
Yeah, because, well, I would, yeah, we should, we should, yeah, but.
So I think, I think those, like, couple tweaks.
All right.
Make me think that this is almost good to go.
All right, I'll tweak that. You can look more closely at the language that I put in there about the Parks and Rec.
So are you suggesting, when you said it sounds like they have purview to create their own parties, right? Are you suggesting that we not limit it to Parks and Rec, or just say this rule, law, whatever, may be suspended without specifically saying by the Parks and Rec, because it could be, what if it's someone else?
So the previous, the previous language, the previous language, the previous language just basically had that either the Parks and Rec Department.
Conservation.
Yeah, which is interesting, too, maybe take that out of there, actually, right?
Oh, no, that's just owned by.
Owned by, sorry, so the previous language had these clauses about how the Parks and Rec Department could suspend, which is interesting, too, because why would they be granted power to suspend an ordinance?
As they put on festivals?
They do, but, I mean, like, but, and, yeah, but. Oh, by majority of, allow the possession and use of alcoholic beverages and consumption thereof.
By majority vote of whom?
The commission.
Their commission.
So that should not say Parks and Rec Department?
It should say commission, yeah, I can change that.
Or the Parks and Rec Department, by majority vote of the Parks and Rec Commission, may allow the possession and use of alcohol.
I'll say commission. But, so.
Because they're separate.
So. But, I mean, but that first part is just like where you can't drink, so anything maintained by City Parks and Rec, or anything maintained by Conservation, all city-owned school, all those places, you can't. But then there's that one section, which can set, the Parks and Rec Commission can set designated areas within their property.
Right, correct.
So.
They're kind of granting them that power.
That power over the, yeah.
And that's, that's that section E, but then I wanted to just kind of like give, I don't know, didn't give lip service is the right word, but I wanted to kind of address what was going on, was that basically they were kind of like, could then create their, kind of their own further set of, like, regulations that, to some degree, was in conflict with our city ordinance, and so I'll just tie that up.
Yeah, you know, and I wonder, it's really interesting, because I feel like when, you know, we do allow alcohol consumption at Millside Park for, you know, concerts.
Yes.
What would happen if the Parks and Rec Department said they didn't want that?
Well, we could override it.
We could override it.
So they could come to us.
And that has to be, and it's interesting that that has to be quarantined, right?
Well, I can send you.
Food truck Friday.
I'll send you, yeah, so Food Truck Friday, right.
There has to be a person.
But I think that lot's private.
It's quasi, it's like a quasi-public.
So they're basically, so basically?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's like a public way.
Well, it's a public way that was, that was granted easements, permanent easements.
So that's how they get around that, is they apply for a one-day license, and they cordon off their space.
Yeah.
To make it ABB.
Yeah.
And you card people at Millside, too.
Yes.
You do.
You have to get a bracelet.
Yeah, but I could, I could send you all the stuff that John Mason sent me.
Yeah, I mean, it's, for me, it's not like, I'm fine, I don't have a problem with them allowing people to.
No, neither, and I'm not trying to be like.
I just want to find out if there's more areas besides Park and Rec that could have this ability to.
Anywhere.
Right, so I'm.
But that's us.
Does this need to be spiked out? Why do they get to be spiked out?
Because this, because this specific.
Why would it just say? Why would it just say any?
Because this is.
Department.
What's department?
I don't know, but.
Because this is.
If you're saying the Parks and Rec Commission may set designated areas such as rental places, but, are you saying because they own the land?
Because this is a sub, this is a subcategory of the category that specifically addressed the parks, that's why I put it there.
Yeah.
So section C specifically discusses parks and where you can and can't drink, and then I, then I was like, looking at the regs, and like, how do we make these two mesh? And that's why I put that there.
Gotcha.
So that makes sense.
So thi- so just so I know, one is new, this paragraph is new, D is new, E is not new.
E exists.
So it would, it's A, B, C, this would be D currently?
Hmm, I believe so, yeah, do you want me to, do you want me to print you, want me to, why don't I send you the current, uh?
Yeah.
Send it to me too.
Yeah.
Send it to me too.
The current and the future.
Yeah, I will send you the, the current one as well.
And then, so maybe, uh, next time, we can tighten up both of these things and get them ready for the New Year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, um, uh, whenever you're ready to talk about cannabis stuff. I know you have a little rush.
You got a little hold on it, just a little.
The beauty of the cannabis one is that by creating regulations around where you can't consume and allowing one to then suspend those regulations, you could do some of the same things that we're talking about.
True, true, and, and I, well, what I want to do is I want to, like, you know, for the cannabis one, I, I feel like it's going to be a, you know, there, it could potentially be an interesting discussion, because we might want to look at creating safe areas for it.
Well, and I, and, and the language in there talks about things like that, it talks about, um, oh, shall not apply to, uh, products which are designated area of a cannabis establishment located in, you, 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 yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against looking at that.
That was part of the purpose of that too.
Sure.
To kind of be like, well, if we're out on Main Street and I have my family, I don't want you smoking a joint in my kid's face.
Right.
Not that I'm against people smoking joints, I just want to like.
Just like you don't want them to smoke a cigarette in your kid's face.
Right, or, or cigar.
Drinking a beer.
Um, but, at, so too.
Well, even though a beer, I mean, if you go to a restaurant, then it's going to be people drinking.
But you're a restaurant, right, so you're an establishment, much like we should have, but, but without getting, and then, but, but, so too, if you wanted to have extravaganza in East Hampton, we could be like, we could define, we could suspend the ordinance or define an area where you could consume.
Yeah.
I know.
And that doesn't appeal to you.
And, and, and you know how much of an advocate I am.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just because this, there's a difference, in my mind, environmentally, from drinking and cannabis, cannabis is smelly, and like, it just.
Well, that was.
It does have.
It gets on your clothes.
And that was my other thought too, is that there's to some degree.
Which is, which is funny, because, and, and I would love to know what the actual, there's, you know how some people love cilantro?
Yeah.
And some people hate it?
Yes.
I think there, there's a similar gene.
Yeah.
It must be, it's just some.
I have a good podcast for you about that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's got to be, it's got, because there's some people that just love it, and there's some people that just hate it.
But I have the same reaction to cigarette smoke on clothes or on people.
Yeah, yeah.
Ugh!
Well, and, and that's why, you know, as we start to look at this, maybe, I know that, I, I remember, I don't know if it was state language, or, it couldn't have been, because it's state kind of prohibits it outside of private property, but, you know, places where people typically would, would smoke cigarettes.
Right.
You know, so if you, it's outside of a bar, or some, you know, in the back, where people are smoking cigarettes, that would be a place that would be acceptable, because people are smoking cigarettes.
Hang on.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's certainly, I mean, you could, you could craft it to like the public, like the main public ways, or, you know, I mean, there's certainly ways to.
So anyway, we, that's a bigger conversation that I think is going to be, like, more nuanced than a part of it for us.
No, absolutely, and I'm like, I'm not looking to get people nailed for smoking pot, I'm looking to create, um.
Library, downstairs.
I'm looking for the library.
Library, downstairs, conference room.
All right, thank you.
I'm looking to create a responsible framework, because people came forward with, I think, reasonable concerns, and maybe some of them were misinformed about what people might do with, with this industry, and so, I, when, when daycare owners and people at large come to me, and like, I'm worried about people, you know, smoking, because I'll, I agree too, to some people, it is a public nuisance to the owner, and so I was like, hey, I hear you, like, let's just do this, like, I'm just trying to be responsible, and.
Sure, no, there's nothing wrong with that, and, and I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with this, I just think it's, we're going to have to dig deep into it.
Yeah, I'm digging deep, I like digging deep.
So let's get these.
Let's get these ones off.
So, okay, so, so then, okay, so, so you're, you were saying to reduce the vehicle open container to three hundred dollars.
Yep.
Eliminate the school and daycare thing.
Yep.
Um, and you're, you're pretty okay with, you're okay with the other stuff, right?
Yeah, just tweaking.
Yeah, I'll change the recreation department to commission, because that would be who votes on that, so I can send you, I can change, I'll send you the current, um, thing, I have it somewhere. I mean, this is like last week, last summer, like, was it like twenty eighteen?
Really?
Might be.
You know why? Because this is, this is whenever the herbology, this is from, because of the herbology.
Yeah, herbology, which I don't even think is going in there.
I heard a rumor about that, right?
I don't know, yeah, I mean, it seems like Liberty's getting ready to open.
Herbology is the one that was down by Stop and Shop, right?
Uh, it was.
No, no, no.
For the, next to the post office.
Building supply.
Oh, right, yeah, I haven't heard anything about that.
I could tell you when that was, actually, possibly.
But I think the one down by Stop and Shop is a dead.
No, Liberty is opening, Liberty.
No, not Liberty, farther down.
Uh, Apicale.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, by Big Y?
Yes, right by it.
Stop and Shop.
Well, I'm wrong.
He confused me, I'm like.
It's your loyalty.
I'm like, what, the old Stop and Shop parcel?
It's your loyal, it's your loyalty to, uh, Phil.
Phil.
I enjoy their, their.
The, the green and the, yeah, it's really nice.
I really do.
You hate their smell, but you like their look.
I, I like the business, I like the concept, I love that it's legal.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not, I'm NIMBY on that sucker.
Yeah, well, my wife is too, so.
I, she doesn't like this.
Oh, she hates it.
Oh, yeah.
It's gross.
I mean, yeah, uh, oh, yeah, so, uh, that, so that public hearing was twelve four eighteen.
Wow.
So.
Yeah.
Well, we've just had, I mean.
It's a year.
It's been a busy year.
Well, that's, I, look, I, I, I haven't been like, examine, what are we going to?
No, 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 I knew that it was going to come, in fact, I was ready to bring it back.
Farther down.
Yeah.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, is I've been, I've been happy to, uh, that we've just like.
Well, and it's funny, we were on the same wavelength, because I was ready to get, dive into this tonight, so.
Oh, well, there we go.
That was on my, that was on my list.
Oh, I was worried.
Well, it brings us down to basically two agenda items after these two.
What? Then, you know.
Yeah.
Perhaps I will or will not be on this committee.
We'll see what happens.
Um, okay, so I'll make those changes.
And email it to.
Perhaps you won't be on this committee.
Oh, jeez.
Well, there's probably, um, there's probably the number of presumptions we should make over.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
But I mean.
No one knows.
I may not.
No one knows.
We may not even be on this planet.
Right.
Let's hope not.
Now that would be fun.
All right, so, I think we have a plan, and we're going to look at a, another meeting date, does that seem appropriate?
Where, what's today, the tenth?
Today is the tenth.
So fourteen days from now is the twenty, no.
Oh, that's probably not going to work.
So Jan, Vieri.
Jan, Vieri.
Whatever, so.
It looks like the seventh.
Is there, is, well.
Seventh at Public Safety.
Oh, I, I.
I was just gonna, I was gonna ask one quick question now.
Yeah.
Is there, um.
Everything's up, maybe it should be after the eighth.
Well, is there any short meeting?
Yeah.
Is there a short meeting that we can meet at? Well, I can ask you this historically, this isn't like, without even mentioning any names. So I believe, two years ago at this point, you had told me that the individual responsible for meet for minutes had done a ton, a lot of minutes, you had to then catch up on a lot of minutes, right? So, do you want, do the minutes, because I think that there's, I have to go back to Barbara basically, like, well, which ones go?
Which ones are missing?
Do we have to have that finished by the year, or?
Yes.
Yeah, technically.
Only because the people who are clerks now may not be clerks next year, and they'll be moved on.